...of seven pertaining to the improvements that were funded by Caltrans and now are enjoined on highways one ninety-nine and one ninety-seven.
Okay, thank you very much.
And they've already approved that?
They have.
So, that's our report out from closed session, but I don't believe we have anything else to report out.
Nothing else.
So, we'll go ahead and reconvene in open session, and I call the meeting to order, and would you please give roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Here.
Councilmember Shalung?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Here.
And Mayor Holly?
Here. Okay, thank you, and please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Ania.
My pledge of allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and the Free Republic of Richmond, our nation, and our God, the municipal, liberty, and justice of all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ania. So, moving forward then, we have nothing under acknowledgements. We do have a consent calendar to consider. We have the regular minutes from June 2nd, two thousand fourteen. We have the warrant claims list from June 3rd to June 16th. We have the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending May 31, two thousand fourteen, and paid on June 6th, two thousand fourteen. There's a matter to consider and authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement to perform water testing services for Pelican Bay State Prison. There's a... Number five is to consider and approve an employment agreement for an interim police chief and authorize the city manager to sign. And number six, the last matter has an A and a B to it under consent... That's easy for me to say. The consent calendar is Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash twenty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City declaring the date of the general municipal election of two thousand fourteen and specifying the offices to be filled. And the second part of that matter is to consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Crescent City requesting consolidation of the November 4, two thousand fourteen, City of Crescent City election with the November 4, two thousand fourteen, County of Delnort consolidated general election. So, are there any public comments on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, items one through six, A, B.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved that the entire consent agenda be approved? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Ania. Thank you. So, the consent calendar has been moved and seconded, and any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shalung?
No.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
We've known for a couple of years now is going to be obsolete at the end of 2015. And I've been scratching my head and pulling out my hair trying to figure out where are we going to get this money? And I haven't been able to come up with a solution. So we've just continued deferring it and hoping that something will happen, fall into our laps, and here we are. I might be the only one in the room that's really happy about this development because it solves a lot of, a lot of our problems. Our copier is basically the same kind of situation. It's really kind of a miracle that it's still going. We work that thing to the bone, and we've had it for so many years. We, it's very central to our operations. We use it for our checks, we use it for all of our contracts and leases, all of the client income documents. And it's just really only a matter of time before it gives out. And we spend, you know, a lot of time calling for it and the copier maintenance people to help us patch it back together every time something goes wrong. So, we're, we're at a critical need point here. And we're trying to bring some new families onto the program, and there's such limited staff that we really need to have the equipment that the program requires to deliver a high level of service to our clients. So this is really would be an absolutely ideal situation for us.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Very good. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Looks like we're going to have Mr. Weir come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Hawley, members of the council. So, yeah, so as, as Megan mentioned, the Housing Authority's needs are great, and really so is the city as a whole with all of our facilities and projects that we have. The need is great, the list is long, and unfortunately, we don't have funding for everything. But with the CDBG requirements that they had in place, it dictated that our focus for at least these, this group of funding is to focus on the pool, because it met the requirements of the CDBG income stipulations. So when we looked at the pool and some of the facility needs, there's facility needs, and then there's also needs to increase some of the functionality of the pool. So, the roof of the pool, we're bringing up the presentation right now. The roof was, hasn't been replaced in over forty years, from at least my knowledge of it anyway. And it's starting to show signs, so it's thirty, forty years, and it definitely needs replacing. And apologize for my stutterness here as I'm trying to get through the presentation. Can you? Ah, so we're working on bringing up some photos. We have one, so we'll take it at this point.
When do we get that new computer equipment?
Yeah, exactly, at the Housing Authority. Maybe we can hold the council meetings there. So, anyway, I'm a little confused as to why the pool presentation's on there, but what we have here is a picture of one of the existing skylights. This skylight was put in in probably nineteen sixty-four, when the pool was being built, sixty-five, hasn't been replaced. You zoomed in on this picture, which is one of the other photos that we had. You can actually see the cracks in it. It's condensating constantly due to the pool atmosphere, as well as just the weather that we have here allows moisture to come in. The paint's cracking and peeling. So, as part of the facility upgrades with this money, we're, we have programmed to replace the roof with a new thirty-year composition roof, and then replace the skylights. That estimated cost is approximately around sixty thousand dollars. The other aspect of this project is, is to do some ADA improvements to the, maybe to the east side of the pool. So if you're familiar with the pool, and again, apologize, don't have that, that graphic up, but if you drive around to the east side, where actually the ADA changing, family change room is on that side of the pool, there's two doors, two entrances on that side. Both of them are not accessible. So the accessible route is to go through the front, come in through the locker room area, and then you can access that facility through that route. What this project will do is actually create ADA parking on that east side, and then allow an accessible path from that parking space directly to that door. So it'll be the shortest path of travel. And that estimated cost is somewhere around fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then there'll be some program, program administration costs as well, so that brings our total to approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand for this pool project.
Are there any questions of Mr. Weir? Nothing? Okay, thank you again. So, is there any public comment on this matter? This is, I believe, a public hearing? So is there any public comment relative to the public hearing that we're holding tonight on, on Resolution 2014-24? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Yes, sir. You know, I'm really happy to see that we were able to obtain and use this money for both the Housing Authority and for the pool. And it's, it's good that, that you have both of these items for the future, because we didn't have the money, and it's really good that we now have the money for this, to be changing the rules here for the, seeing if you can go off the bat. So I'm glad that both of these projects have been used.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious if you can outline the changes that were put upon you at the last
The changes in the program income spending?
Mm-hmm.
And Emily can, you know, maybe help me out on that, but the HCD staff basically changed the rules and stated that you need to spend your program income money prior to spending any future grant awards. So we've applied as a city for the next grant award, and our 2014 grant was the second, excuse me, B Street Sewer Project, and Harrington House Project, or, you know, funding, what was the other? There was another funding, Food Bank, Harrington House Food Bank, and there's one other in there.
Head Start.
Head Start, thank you. The Head Start Project. We think we have a very good opportunity to receive that award. We were told by HCD that they will make their decision in July. And once they make that decision, then the process starts to do the paperwork, and we have probably, as soon as we could probably start spending that money, would be, you know, September, October of this year, if in fact, they award in July. The big change to the program income is that you need to spend your program income prior to spending, or prior to spending that future award. They have also stated that if you want a program income waiver, you need to submit that by July one, or June thirtieth, so they can, you know, review and either, you know, this action you take can either go to HCD and they'll, you know, approve or deny our request in the program income waivers. They only have two out at one time, that's why we had to make sure the other one was closed. So we closed that one, we submit two, hopefully that they approve those. If we don't get it in by July one, then the only time that we can submit the program income waiver is by an amendment to our future award of a grant, which would delay the spending of that grant until they took a look at our program income. So that was the, kind of the necessity of getting this, you know, noticed and on the agenda before, you know, July one, and getting it to HCD.
My concern is that I thought that the program income funds had to be spent on projects that had already been previously approved by HCD unless they met the target income group eligibility requirements.
And that was the exercise that staff went through. That's the exercise staff went through in the last two weeks, once we, you know, understood what the changes were, and that we went through to see what projects would meet the targeted income group, and what, you know, HCD would approve within, you know, by July one. So we went through a list of, you know, projects and programs, and what can we, what would meet those target income group, you know, the eligibility of HCD, and then also what can we, you know, have spent prior to October of 2014? So once, if we get that award, you know, for our 2014 grant, that we'll be kind of ready to spend that money.
So the pool met that requirement?
Correct.
And they've already approved that?
They have. This action tonight, we're recommending that we're going to send this to HCD. We've talked to HCD. You know, Ms. Adams from Mark and Song Group has helped us and guided us through this process, and we've had communications with HCD, so we do anticipate them approving.
When did they make the change?
Last month? May? End of May.
That was it for me.
Okay, that's it? Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Platsch. Emily? Okay, so this matters before us?
I'll move that we approved Resolution 2014-24, a resolution of the City Council of the Crested, City of Crescent City authorizing the reuse of Community Development Block Grant Program Income contingent on the granting of the state, of a State Department of Housing and Community Development Program Income Waiver, and authorize City Manager to sign all necessary documents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2014-24. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, very good. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
I'm going to abstain.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley?
Yes. Okay, so moving on then to number eleven. We're going to skip over ten, we already dealt with the number ten public hearing. Number eleven, we're going to conduct a public hearing to consider an approved Resolution number 2014-24, wait, five? What's wrong with me and I? A resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2014-15. Consider an approved Resolution number 2014-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City selecting the annual adjustment factors for the calculation of the 2013-2014 appropriations limit for the City of Crescent City, and take action as necessary and appropriate. So, we have the, the 2014-15 budget before us. Mr. Platsch?
Yes, Mayor Hawley, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Boyd, but, yeah, I just want to thank staff, you know, directors and many managers. We spent a lot of time on this budget this year, bringing it before the council at a budget workshop. It's a very difficult process when it's, you don't have that, you know, much revenue coming in, trying to, you know, address the priorities of the city, you know, what, what is the best, you know, for the community at this time. What Ms. Boyd's going to do is just, you know, do a PowerPoint presentation, kind of recap our budget workshop. I think there's a few items that we want to make, you know, add that, you know, you know, some funding, funds that we didn't, you know, touch upon during the budget workshop, and to make sure that we, you know, do hit everything. It's good for the community to see this, you know, on TV as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Boyd to go through that presentation. A lot of it you've seen already, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Hi. We are going to get that up there for you. First of all, I would like to emphasize that budgets are estimates, and they are based upon the best, the combined efforts of the department heads, the finance director, the city manager, and we base our estimates upon what we know about trends, what we know about current information, what's currently going on. And also, we get some information from a variety of other sources, such as from the state. We get information regarding our gas tax revenues. We get information from our consultants. We have a consultant named HDL who does our sales tax analysis and audits, and we get information from them regarding sales tax trends and predictions. So this is a, an effort that a lot of people have put energy and analysis into. I just want to talk briefly about some changes you're going to see here from the items that were presented to you at the 529 budget workshop. All of the funds have some minor adjustments to the interfund transfers for internal services. We were still finalizing those numbers when we went to you on May twenty-nine. The water and the sewer funds have some changes, which we'll discuss when we get to those slides. And there are some other funds that are budgeted that we did not discuss in May twenty-nine. Basically, on May twenty-nine, we talked about the five major operating funds of the city. That's the general fund, the Housing Authority, the RV park, the water and the sewer. And there are some other funds, special revenue funds, internal service funds, capital acquisition funds, and fiduciary funds that we didn't talk about. So we'll touch on this briefly tonight. First, I want to talk a little bit about staffing trends. I've given you here some history of the FTEs for the last five years, and you can see, and this is the citywide total, this is not broken out by fund. You can see here that these numbers have been declining over those, those years. The original, you know, from seventy-eight point four-five in the fiscal eleven budget to seventy-one point two-five in the budget projected for fiscal fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. In thirteen fourteen, the original budget had sixty-nine point two-five FTEs. Throughout the course of the year, the fiscal year, the council has approved to additional positions, which brings it up to the seventy-one point two-five. Our position changes, we had some staffing changes that I wanted to run through with you. The, in the city manager's office, the administrative assistant position was changed to an HR manager. The city clerk had been a-
Can I interrupt you? What, what time period are you speaking about?
For which-
The staffing changes.
This is between fiscal year thirteen fourteen and fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
So you're saying that Laura's position before last year was administrative assistant?
That's what her title is, yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. The city clerk had been a half-time elected position, and that's changing to an elected position only, which has a stipend, rather than being an FTE. The assistant city clerk is now a full-time position, and that was approved by the council in March. Throughout the course of the year, you heard that we were changing the financial analyst position to an accountant.
Can I ask another question?
I saw, I saw you posing.
Sorry, but I, I believe that we agreed to put it on the ballot to become a full-time position.
No, this is the assistant city clerk that the council approved that position.
Oh, until we get anyone?
Correct. That basically is the, the person in the office that'll help, you know, do the functions of the city clerk. You know, Ms. Batch will be the city clerk and kind of oversee and be responsible for, for, you know, those clerk functions. We came to the council and discussed this, and that was approved.
Yeah. Until we know the result of the election, we, yeah.
No, there's, there's two, two separate things there. You know, we came to the council, you know, Ms. Batch requested to, you know, step back and be more of, you know, attend the meetings and do the minutes, more of a, you know, yeah, and, and then in order to pick up the work that's in the office, you know, we hired, you know, we got approval by the city council for the assistant city clerk position. Most recently, I think it was last meeting, we came back to the city council, and Ms. Batch has asked that, you know, made a presentation about having the clerk go from an elected position to an appointed position.
Right.
And that is what, you know, what will be on the ballot in-
Right, I understand that, so sorry about my confusion. So your end result will be you'll have a full-time city clerk and a part-time city clerk?
No, the end result would be one, a city clerk.
When you say end result, like what point in time are you focusing on? After the election?
Our budget. How it's affecting our budget.
In, in- This budget, you have an assistant city clerk that'll, you know, pick up the city clerk functions.
So we have Robin, and then we're going to have an assistant city clerk, and then in November, we're going to have a full-time city clerk, but no more Robin.
Well, yeah. What's going to go on the ballot is basically just to allow the city to change it from an elected position to an appointed position. Doesn't necessarily mean that I'm not going to be here anymore. My term will be up in 2016. I just, it just gives the city an opportunity after that point to be able to have an appointed city clerk instead of having it go to the election. The administrative, excuse me, the assistant city clerk will be also essentially, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I thought it would be like a secretary to the city manager as well as, because my duties are only part-time in the office. So that person would be doing my day-to-day things, and I would just be doing the minutes and attending the meetings for a small stipend.
You're correct. It has a half-time, you know, admin-type assistant position in the city manager's office to help with, you know, the projects and programs that we're, we're working on.
I don't think that, anyway, I didn't understand that. I thought that the, us moving towards having the city clerk appointed as a full-time employee was because you wanted to step back.
I, I do want to step back. I, I do.
But you're saying you're going to be with us till 2016?
I, I would say that that is the option. You don't, you won't necessarily lose me in November.
Depends on what the election, how the election comes out in November.
Yeah, and if this, if the citizens agree that, yes, they would like it to be an appointed position, then that would give the city an opportunity to select somebody to replace me.
But we would still have you.
You would, until you make that, until you make the decision to appoint someone.
And then we would no longer have you.
Right.
Okay.
At least not in this capacity.
I'm trying to make sure we don't have three people that we're budgeting for.
We do not.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So continuing on, the financial analyst position was changed to an accountant. The accounts purchasing clerk was reclassified to an account clerk three. The fire department secretary was reclassified to administrative assistant. We, in this budget, we have one police officer position to be changed to a sergeant position. We have an engineering project manager position that was approved by the council last fall. And in the Housing Authority, we had budgeted in fiscal fourteen of one point oh FTEs for housing inspector. We're reducing that to an oh point five FTE, and we're increasing the clerk typist, or we're going to hire an additional part-time clerk typist at oh point five FTE, so there's no net change in the Housing Authority either. Take a look at the personnel costs in all of the funds, and this again is citywide. The total wages and salaries and benefits, and you see there that I've added some variance columns, so you can see how it changed between fourteen fifteen and thirteen fourteen. The wages and salaries increases are due to, not to, a cost of living adjustment that is not included here. What is included here are wages and salary increases that we prudently need to budget for. They may occur, they may not. For example, there are thirty-nine employees that are eligible for merit increases. We need to budget for the possibility that those will in fact be earned. Fifty-five percent of the city employees have been working for the city for less than five years, and typically, on the step schedules, you're still eligible for merit increases up to, you know, the five steps. So typically, it takes five years to reach the top step.
Are you talking about merit increases or step increases?
It's often interchange, used interchangeably, so it's a step increase.
Merit is not a good word here, so I would recommend you use step increases.
Noted. And we additionally needed to budget for eight employees that were eligible to take vacation payouts based upon their, their MOU agreements. In the event that they ask for that, we need to have funding available for it. We have some retiring employees that we know we're going to need to pay out their accrued time, and there was a minimum wage increase, and that affects the pool lifeguards. And then we had benefit increases. Calpurs rates went up, workers' comp rates went up. So that is kind of the global picture for what the changes in personnel costs were. Moving along to the general fund, the variance between fourteen fifteen and thirteen fourteen is sixty-one thousand dollar increase. Sixty thousand of that is due to the cultural center floor renovation project. There is an expenditure of sixty thousand to do the project. We are going to be reimbursed from GSRMA, our insurance company, for the sixty thousand, so it's a revenue and expense. The next slide is a pie chart that you saw in 529. It shows the general fund revenues, and you can see that the biggest pieces of that pie are sales tax and transient occupancy tax. Together, those represent fifty-two percent of the city's general fund revenues. General fund expenditures by category. Once again, you can see that the largest piece of that pie, where it goes, and that's in personnel costs. Between wages and benefits, that's sixty-three percent of the total. This next pie chart shows the general fund expenditures by department. And safety, that's police and fire, account for forty-nine percent of the city's general fund expenditures. And then there's a lot of smaller pieces of the pie there. General fund balance. I always kind of like to put revenue in green and expenditures in red. You know, when I started in accounting, we had, I'm dating myself, but we had the manual books, and negatives were red. So, that's why I like to do that money as green. I leave the fund balance at purple, because I like purple. What you can see from this bar chart is how back in two thousand ten-eleven, you can see that there's a big structural deficit there, where the red is jumping above the green, and that's kind of the reverse of what you want to have happen. Some corrections were made in fiscal year eleven twelve, where the expenditure number, the expenses were cut dramatically. And then by the time you got to the more recent years, you see you have expenditures and revenues are roughly the same. So we're achieving a balanced budget. You'll also see that that purple amount is staying fairly steady. So we are kind of, in, in that sense, we are, our general fund is stabilized. We have a general fund policy, a reserve policy. About twenty-five percent of the expenditure budget should be set aside as a reserve. Our current expenditure budget is four point five million. Twenty-five percent reserve goal would be one point one million. We currently have one point oh million set aside, so we still need a hundred and thirty-two thousand more to reach our reserve goal. I'm also going to talk a little bit about some special revenue funds, and those include the Housing Authority, CDBG, gas tax, the Housing Successor, and the Abatement Fund. Starting with the Housing Authority, you can kind of see from this how, if you look at the purple bar, how when the sequestration was happening, you can see how that balance was going down, down, down. And you can also see when sequestration was happening, how the expenditures were, were topping out, they were above our revenues every year. In fiscal thirteen fourteen, we kind of got that under control, where our revenues were a wee bit more than our expenditures. And you can see the purple starts to come back up a little bit. In fourteen fifteen, the revenues and expenditures are very close to the same. CDBG, current funding. This is from our two thousand twelve grant award. So we have the RSH, RSH, sorry, RHS, dyslexic. RHS Food Bank and the Harrington House, we have some monies there left in their contracts, and we'll be continuing to fund those through the terms of the grant. The indoor swimming pool, we have fifty thousand from that grant for fiscal year fourteen fifteen. I think it's important to note that that is not going to be repeated in fifteen sixteen. So in fifteen sixteen, we're going to have to find some way to replace that fifty thousand of, of revenue for grant oper, for pool operations. So we're going to have a challenge in that year. And then additional CDBG programs for the SBDC, and then there's some project delivery activity costs and administration costs. So in our funds number one oh three and one oh nine, we have total budget there of four hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then we have CDBG, CDBG programs, these are projected funding. These two items are the program income items that we just discussed in the two preceding agenda items, for a total expenditure from funds one oh four and one oh five of a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. The gas tax fund. We've been using the gas tax fund as a depository for the gas tax revenues from the state of California, and a portion of that money is getting passed through to the county of Dill Nord, and my understanding that is per the annexation agreement that was related to the prison when the prison was annexed. I have not yet been able to locate a copy of that agreement, and staff's been looking for it. We really kind of need to see that agreement and review it. for it. We really kind of need to see that agreement and review it, make sure that it's current and up to date. Part of the reasons that, part of the reason that I want to look at that agreement is that we want to make sure that we are appropriately using the gas tax funds. Typically, gas tax funds are provided to you to use, or allowable uses are from the back of the sidewalk on one side of the street to the back of the sidewalk on the other side of the street. So I have some questions about the use of these funds, but we will do more research and we'll get back to the council at a later date.
And Mr. Black just whispered in my ear that it may be embedded in some state legislation that we'll take a look at.
Oh, that'd be great, if we can do that research and find it. That'd be very helpful. We have other special revenue funds. Fund 116 is the successor housing fund, and it does have a projected fund balance of $446,000. That balance is not cash, so it's not something that's readily available for use. 306 of it is due from the housing, or from the successor agency for the CRAF loan. And until we can get the Oversight Board, the housing, the successor agency, the Oversight Board, and the Department of Finance to approve repayment of that loan, those funds will not come back into the housing fund. And then there's some other assets there that contribute to that $446,000 fund balance, and those are not really cash either. Fund 215, that, oh, there's another dyslexic. That should be Fund 251. Sorry.
It's starting to worry me. You're our accountant.
Well, I'm hiring, we're hiring somebody to proofread my stuff. Okay, so this is the abatement fund that we talked at the, at the budget workshop about rolling that back into the general fund, and that's how we've prepared the budget for this year to do that. And then we should talk about the enterprise funds. The RV park, this is a bar chart very similar to what you saw at the budget workshop. You can see there that the purple bar is going up a little bit each year in recent years, and we've been accumulating that balance. We're going to use it to help us complete the renovation project in this upcoming year. Staff will be bringing that project back to you at some point. And then the water fund, and we finally turned the corner on this fund. You can see there, in '14-'15, the purple starts to go back up. The revenues are exceeding the expenditures by a little bit. The expenditures here are actually $45,000 greater than the expenditures that were presented to you on May 25th, because we wanted to include an amount there for the cost of issuance of any financing that we might do. Part of the reason that we had the water rate increase in January is to finance infrastructure projects that the water fund desperately needs. There's some elevated tank projects and other tank projects, and I'm sure if you have questions on those, Mr. Weir can answer those. So we now have a fund that's in a sufficiently healthy financial position that we can go out to the financing, finance markets and borrow money if we need to. One of the things that Mr. Weir has been working on is getting us some grants for these projects, and so we have two tracks going. One is get grants and one is obtain financing. And of course, if we get grant money, we're not going to borrow money, and that obviously is a preferable tact. And here is the sewer fund, which continues to be challenging. Want to point out one thing first. On the bar chart, you see that fiscal year 12, revenues or expenditures take a big old spike there, and that's because that's the first year that we started making the debt service payments. We have a rather large state revolving fund loan that accounted for the, I guess, the improvements or the rehabilitation or something of the wastewater treatment plant. It was a new wastewater treatment plant.
A whole lot of or something.
Oh, yeah. I'm not an engineer, so I can't really clarify that one. So a change in this chart from what you saw on May 25th, or 29th, is that in preparing the fiscal '14-'15 budget, I took another look at the revenues that we're expecting to, that we had projected for '13-'14, and our revenue projections were high. And so in order to bring this back to something that's more realistic of what we're actually going to see this year, I adjusted the revenue projection down. The net adjustment brings it down $227,000, which changes your, that working capital balance number in fiscal '13-'14 had previously been a positive $22,000, and that's the amount that I reported to you in February at the mid-year. But adjusting those revenues down to what I actually expect they will be brings us to a negative $205,000. I also think it's important to point out to you that this expenditure line, I anticipate that number will come down as well once we close our books. We get to the end of the year here, we pay all of our fiscal '14 bills. I don't think that our expenditures are going to come in at the 5.0 million that's there. I didn't want to make any projection at this point because there's still things outstanding, so I wanted to make sure they had a comfortable number I could work with. Let's see, what else should I tell you about the sewer fund? I think that 205, I think the 5.0 million in expenditures may drop to, by as much as $200,000. It may drop to 4.8. That's my, that's my expectation.
So then your proposed number for '14-'15 will be about 451?
Correct.
And so what are we going to do about that? We can't just adopt a budget in the sewer fund that's $450,000 in the red without going back and doing some serious work.
Yeah, and the staff is doing that serious work right now. We're, as we talked in discussions with the state to take, we take a look at our loan with the state. We anticipate coming back to the city council by the end of July, early August with an update to this budget.
I have a quick question on that. So our projected payment in August is about $2 million?
2.1.
2.1, and if we do get the 0% interest, you're thinking it'll come down to about $1 million?
That's correct.
Okay, so then if all of that were to happen, then our proposed balance for the sewer fund would be a positive $400,000?
Conceivably, it could be that. That's correct.
Again, we're talking with the state, and we're kind of, you know, not sure where we're going with them at this point, but we will come back to the council in July, August.
Right, I just, I think my personal opinion is that we need to have a Plan B before, while we're waiting for the state, because if they come back and say no, we need to have a different.
If I may chip in here on a scenario for a Plan B, and one of the things that I would like to ask the council tonight is that this projected budget for '14-'15 includes the full debt service payment, but I would like you to adopt this budget with the caveat that the staff will come back to you before we make any debt service payment with an adjustment. Hopefully, we'll have more information by the state that we can present to you, and we can also give you a recommendation on how, what your debt service payment should be. And at that time, we'll also be, we will also know what our fiscal year '14 expenditures actually turned out to be, so we'll know how much of a working capital balance we have to work with, and we'll also be able to give you some recommendation on what you should pay. At that time, I would anticipate that our recommendation would be that that $651 is going to be at least zero or maybe a little bit positive, because I agree with you, we can't really budget in the negative if we don't have any reserves to draw from. But we need to move forward with our budget so we continue to do operations, and so I would ask you to adopt the budget with that caveat that we're not expending the debt service until we return to you.
But I would like to see a budget based on us not having the ability to not pay our 2.1, with that $651,000 brought down, or possibly $450,000.
I understand what you're saying, and that's what I'm saying. We'll return to you in July or August with those numbers.
So what is the timing again, Emily? We're talking about getting some answers maybe from the state as early as July or August?
September.
Well, yeah, right now, we're discussions with the state, so hopefully by, in mid-July, we'll have some answers or some, maybe some recommendations that they would make to their board that we can bring back to the council and discuss.
Okay, moving on to internal service funds. These are the funds where we accumulate the costs for various types of internal services that are used citywide, and then the other funds of the city reimburse these funds. And all of these funds, with the exception of equipment services, are budgeted on a break even, so the expenditures that they have are reimbursed every year. First one is the equipment services fund, and we have some proposed capital equipment purchases this year in this fund. Sewer cleaner for $50,000, and F-150 pickup for public works of estimated $20,000, a city pool car $25,000, gas pump $10,000, for a total $105,000. This expenditure, if you look in your budget on the fund balance page, which is like the second page of the budget book, will, this expenditure goes into equipment services fund reserves, and following these purchases and operations for the year, the equipment services fund will have a working capital balance of $1,377. One of the things that we need to work on is a review of how we are setting aside money for equipment purchases, and staff is currently reviewing that. What are our equipment and vehicle needs? When do we need it? How much do we need to set aside? We are hoping to be able to come back to you, possibly by mid-year, with more information on how we can address those needs.
Emily, we've been addressing this on a continual basis. I thought the city had put in place a policy for our equipment funding.
We have a method.
And I thought it was, we've done a couple different processes, but the last one I remember was actually putting it into the overhead that we were charging out.
Right, and the overhead that you're charging out is putting money into this equipment services fund, but it's not putting in enough. And that's what we need to evaluate. What are the needs, and is our methodology that we're using for contributions there sufficient, and it's not sufficient?
Also, that makes me think about a while back when I asked that we, as a city, start addressing policies that don't exist, such as a depreciation policy. We should have a depreciation schedule for our equipment, and that would be the way that you work towards funding it.
Exactly, and that is the methodology that I'm recommending that Mr. Weir and other staff members and the city manager and I are looking at. We'll bring it back to you. The methodology that's currently being used to set aside funds is different than that, and it's not really working.
Okay, thank you.
And then the capital project and acquisition funds. We set aside $307,000 into the general capital projects fund, and these are the items that we had set aside for. The fire hall and the city hall remodels are in progress. We haven't used those funds yet. Those funds are still there. The signal replacement, I believe that project is complete or mostly complete, and we will have expended that money. When we get to our actuals at the end of the fiscal year and we close it, we'll see that that money has been used.
So is that money for the new budget, if we're, if we've already expended it?
The $33,000, no. And basically, what I'm saying to you here is if you look at the available fund balance on the projected fund balance page in the budget, I think it's like the second page or so behind the title page, you see that this fund has a projected fund balance of $307,000, so I was just reminding everyone of what that money had been set there for, even though I...
Not a reoccurring.
No, this is a one-time expenditure.
This is a one-time expenditure, so, you know, we say we have these expenditures and we put the money into this capital, what we call capital projects fund, and so that's what that money is earmarked for to be spent on.
Right, I just, I would, I would think that the $33,000 would be in the '13-'14 budget, and the other two would be in the '14-'15 budget.
Actually, all three of them were in the '13-'14 budget. We didn't get to items one and two, and so we're going to carry those forward to be done.
And putting them in this capital projects fund basically carries these dollars over on an annual basis, saying, you know, we're going to, this is what we're spending it on. If we want to spend it differently, then we need to come back to the city council and just say, you know, we're not going to do this project. We're going to shift and spend it somewhere else.
And then on capital acquisition funds, again, in Fund 930 and 940, these are the fire vehicle and the police vehicle replacement funds, and with the '14-'15 budget, we will now have enough money set aside to actually make the purchases. So we're going to be purchasing a fire chief vehicle and a police patrol vehicle. And last slide, for everyone who's fallen asleep. Money is so fascinating. The citywide total budget is, with all of the funds, the revenue is $16.1 million, the expenditures are $16.8. So we're spending into reserves of $712,000, with the exception of the sewer fund, which in the second table there, I listed, what is that $712,000? What does it consist of? And it's on the CDBG programs. That's the program income waiver money that we've been holding that we're now going to spend. The housing authority has a little positive there. The gas tax, we're going to be spending into reserves $14,000.
What do you mean by that? Gas tax are revenues that we deposit and then use towards a project?
Yeah, if I could refer you back to the gas tax slide.
Yeah, well, finding the budget stuff on this laptop is not very user-friendly.
How do I start that again?
So you're just going to have to talk us through it.
All right, well, you have revenues that come in from the state, and then we have expenditures in the gas tax fund, and our two, we have two types of expenditures there. One is a transfer to the general fund, and the other one is a contribution or a pass-through to the county. So, and every year, we have not been spending exactly the total amount that we've received, so we've had some leftover, and that amount leftover is the reserve or the fund balance. And if you look at the bar chart, and maybe I can get it now. Somebody's helping me out here a little bit. Here we go. You can see from the bar chart that the greens every year are not always the same as the reds every year, so in the table below the chart are the dollar amounts is the fund balance reserve we have each year. For fiscal '14-'15, I'm projecting that we will have revenues of $200,000 and change, and expenditures of $215,000 and change, with a net there, if you take the revenues minus expenditures, of a minus $14,000 and change.
Why are we spending more than the revenue that we're receiving from the state?
The revenue from the state, the $200,000, is the amount that I decided to transfer to the general fund. We were trying to make the general fund balance, and that's the amount we needed in the general fund. And then we also have that pass-through revenue that we have to pay on to the county, so the $15,000 is the pass-through revenue.
This, the gas tax proportions that we get went down for the city, didn't it this year?
Yes, they did. It went, yeah, it went down about $20,000. Let me see if I can find my hard copy, because I can't quite read it up there. There we go. It was $230,000 in fiscal '14, and our projected for fiscal '15 is $200,000. And also, if you look at that chart, you see that we had, the ending fund balance at the end of fiscal '15 is projected to be $72,000, so we're leaving some funds there. In fiscal '14, we had roughly $87,000 of the ending fund balance, so we're still leaving some funds there. We're not pulling it all out.
I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I'd prefer that you balance that fund.
Well, if we do that, I think our alternative would be to transfer only $185,000 to the general fund, which means we would need to find $15,000 in general fund expenditures to cut.
Why can you not take it out of the ending fund balance?
That's kind of what I'm doing.
Out of the $72,000?
So you want me to, how do you want me to present this? I'm not sure I'm clear. Our revenues are basically set by the state, so I can't change the revenue numbers.
But you're saying that we still have $72,000 that you haven't transferred?
Right. Do you want me to transfer all of it?
No, I was saying that the $15,000 were short.
Right.
That we should transfer that so that we have a balanced fund. That we should transfer that so that we have a balanced fund.
So you-
Why are you-
I guess I'm not following you, because-
Okay.
If our revenues are $200,000 and you want to balance the fund, then your expenses wouldn't be $200,000, right?
Your revenue is $200,000 because you withdrew $200,000 and transferred it into the general fund, correct?
My revenue in the gas tax fund is what I get from the state for gas tax.
Right.
So I get $200,000 from the state. And what this budget proposes is that $200,000 of that go to the general fund to pay for street maintenance costs in the general fund. We also are required by the agreement that we have with the county to pay them a pass-through, and their pass-through portion is approximately $15,000.
Okay. I guess maybe my misunderstanding then is where is the $72,000 sitting?
It's in the gas tax fund.
Okay. So can we withdraw the $15,000 from the gas tax fund?
But I am. I'm paying it out of the gas tax fund, and after I pay it, I still have $72 left over.
Can you guys get that? I don't, I don't understand it at all.
I think she's confused of the negative $13,000 that was on the slide before.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah.
And this budget, this, this fund is never balanced, because we only get a certain amount that's added on to what the ending fund balance was, and then we pay that into the general fund for the expenditures that we need. And if we don't pay that much in, we have a higher ending fund balance, and if we take more out, we have a lower ending fund balance.
That's correct.
And I guess, you know, with the gas tax on its name, you know, with our general fund in past years, structurally, the state has decided not to fund, you know, we were getting $230,000 on an annual basis. This year, they decided to give us $200,000. That gas tax fund money goes to the general fund to cover the cost that it takes us to maintain our streets. And on top of that, we have a pass-through agreement with the county that we need to send them $15,000. So our revenues decreased. Our expenditures are still, you know, at a certain level over the years, so we're kind of trying to, we're spending into our reserves in the gas tax-
That's correct.
...in order to, you know, continue with, you know, the street projects that we have, and then our obligation to pass through $15,000 to the county. In future, you know, we need to be aware of this, because, you know, I think Councilmember Neid is correct. Our gas tax is going to continue to go down. So in order to maintain our streets and, you know, meet those obligations we have, we're going to have to do some, either adjustments, you know, provide less service, provide less street maintenance, provide, you know, what is that going to look like here? This year, we've adjusted it this way so we can get by. Next year, we're going to probably have to take a look at this a lot harder as we move through the year.
You know, it's going to be interesting to see what happens in Sacramento with transportation funding. When we were at the last Transportation Commission meeting, there was discussion about a, that there's a move afoot to actually go to a tax that basically taxes you based upon the number of miles you drive. And, of course, that will punish anyone that lives in a rural area like Del Norte, because we have to drive a long way to get anywhere. But they're thinking it might be tied in with car registration, and you'd have to report your mileage, you know, at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, and pay a specific tax on that. And there, especially the Southern California counties, are working on trying to move in that direction. So we need to be careful and vigilant about, about transportation monies.
So on this last slide here, what we're, what I'm saying here on the description of the net operating results, these are the funds that didn't have revenues and expenditures equalling to zero. And in the case of the gas tax fund, we were pulling $14,000 from the reserves. And the RV park fund, we're adding an additional $3,300 to the reserves. And the sewer fund, we've talked about that problem already. The water fund is going to have a positive excess of revenues over expenditures of $91,000, and that's money that we can use to go out to the financing markets, and so we can make, pay debt service on our capital improvements, if we need to, if we aren't able to get all the grants that we need.
Can you explain why the sewer is negative 482 on this slide, but in the fund it's negative 651?
That might be an error. Let me check.
No, in the slide you presented earlier.
Right. Oh, I know where that comes from. One moment. I think if you look back at the- in the proposed budget, the fund summary, which is page 2 of 65, these numbers here, these projected operating results are from the column that says net activity. It's the next to the last column. So the net activity for the month is going to be-
Which page?
It's page 2 of 65. What I'm referring to here in the net operating results is the net activity, which, for the current fiscal year. So it is, in the sewer fund, it's 4.5 million minus the 5.0 in round numbers, gives us the negative result for this fiscal year, 482. The 651 number is actually the cumulative negative, which combines both the fiscal year '15 negative of the 482 plus the 205 negative carried forward from fiscal '14.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So let's see. Equipment and vehicles, we talked about going-
Sorry, what, Mr. Gastonau?
We talked about the equipment and vehicle funds. That's the, the police, fire, and the other vehicles coming out of the vehicle fund. So that's our net operating result of the minus 712. Now, of course, we know that that number's going to change in a month or so when we do further evaluation of the sewer fund and determine what exactly we are or are not going to pay on the debt service. So that kind of wraps up my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I'm sure we probably do, questions and comments. I think now, though, is a time I should probably open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing, and after hearing that very fine presentation, I thank you for all the work you've put in, and all of the department heads and Mr. Plazlo. So any public comment on, on this public hearing, comment on Resolution Number 2014-25, the city council budget for 2014, 2015? Seeing no comment at that public hearing, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion.
Well, I'm sorry if I was boring some of you with my questions, but I tend to take this pretty seriously. And I think this is a little different picture than what we were presented a couple weeks ago, and I'm very concerned about it. I'm very concerned with the direction that we're heading. So I have a hard time, have a really hard time passing this budget the way it is tonight.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments? Mr. Neid?
I thought this budget was very well presented. The, last year at this time, two of our-
Two of our four budgets were in deficit, the water fund and the sewer fund. Now we find the water fund is not in deficit anymore. Three of our four budgets are doing well. The sewer budget is not doing well yet, and we're trying to make, do corrections to alleviate that. It's very difficult to do when you live in a small community and we have to provide so many services to our citizens. But I think this, I think this budget is looking fine. And sometimes, it's difficult. We had to come over the last few years, we've had to bring up our general fund, we've had to do our water fund, we had to do our housing, and we are just coming out maybe to see some daylight, even though our economy is not approving that.
...ones, so Mr. Plazlo and I have gone to those, and I think that, I'm really happy. I think that they'll, they'll be doing pretty well this year. And then the airport, the airport JPA BACRA, we had a meeting on the 5th, and we also had another Sutter Health and, Sutter, we had an ad hoc with the healthcare district and the county and a representative from Sutter Health on the 5th. And then we had an art walk on the, the, first art walk of the season on the 6th, which was pretty nice. I don't think I reported, it feels like I've reported all this stuff out already, but I don't think so. And then Dinaca had hosted a, a little soiree for Glenn Duncan, who's going on a scholarship for the summer down to Venetia, I believe it is. So that's, congratulations to him on his, his musical talents. He's very versatile. He plays, I believe it's-
He played the viola for us.
The viola, and he's also a jazz musician, right?
Yes, he plays trombone.
So, the trombone. Anyway, I'll let the mayor, since he was a guest, guest of honor there, talk more about that. And then we also had a local Transportation Commission meeting, which we are part of a intervenors, and so is the city for Highway 199. And then this last weekend, I went down to Humboldt County, and I'm reporting this out because we have a huge event for 4th of July, but Arcata has the Oyster Festival, which is kind of what, kind of akin to our 4th of July event. And so it was kind of interesting to see what kind of events are in another county which are good for economic development. I thought that was really, really important. And then, as Councilmember Shalong reported, we also had another healthcare district ad hoc meeting with the, with the county as well this morning, and then also Father's Day yesterday. And my girls were home, so lots of activities this last weekend. And congratulations to all the Del Norte County High School graduates this weekend.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Gastonau?
I have nothing to report.
Good report, I might add. I, as you could tell, I also went to the Dinaca ceremony for Glenn Duncan. He'll be attending Valencia, I think, is the place where they're going. And it's, it's an art academy, and sometimes they use, they, they have artists and different, different kinds of arts represented. But this year, it was Glenn, and of course, he's going down to learn a lot about music. I think it's at least a five-week experience, and I guess people come from all over for that. So that's a real honor for Glenn, and he is very, very talented. Before Glenn played his viola for us, though, we had a young man that, that, that did a dramatic interpret, I guess it was Shakespearean. It was like a Shakespearean monologue. And so that was fun. He was last year's recipient. So it was a nice evening and, and a very good, good program. I was able to give him flowers, and he was thrilled with that, of course. Went to the Six Rivers Wildfire Meeting, and I'd never gone to one of those, and that was really interesting. I have interest, of course, both in Crescent City and in Gasky, and it's a, kind of a startling news for us, this, this fire season. So we all need to be particularly careful, especially on the 4th of July, because things are very dry out there. I drove up from the Bay Area yesterday, and I think I saw two fires on the way up through that area. And this is just the beginning. And the, and the slides and the statistics were, the fact that there's no snow melt, and there's just, the, the concerns go on and on. And certainly, we're fortunate to be in Crescent City, where we have such a great source of water. But they, they were, you know, things you don't think about, like when they do have a fire and they fully expect there to be fires, there's not enough water in the adjacent rivers and everything to go down and scoop up, I think, and put out the fire. So they're going to, helicopters and those folks are going to have to go a greater distance to deal with these things. And I suppose the same is true even in our, in our part of the area, in some cases. So anyway, it's, it's, I appreciate all you firefighters do, chief, and, and we'll have to keep a real close eye on that.
Reminds me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Are we, do we have the Continued 4th of July Fireworks Committee still meeting? No?
Last year, I think we, we met with a couple of people down on A Street, but no plans on this year.
Do we have-
Is that the committee you're talking about, or which, which committee?
The, the committee after the house burnt down on Pebble Beach, the city really put forth an effort to start educating and, you know, kind of really taking a hard stand on some of the illegal fireworks.
I'd ask one of the chiefs to address that.
We did have a meeting.
Mr. Wayfret.
A couple of years, probably four years ago, I had a meeting between Chief Black, myself, Stan Roberts was another big one, and you were there. And I did a few preemptive things to try, put up some signs and a few things like that to try and hopefully mitigate the illegal fireworks problems. I don't know if you remember, we made them put signs on all the-
Made flyers and everything, I thought.
Yeah. Well, we had these signs all over the place with the, you know, slashed through it.
Right.
It said something like, if it flies, it's illegal, or-
Like a thousand-dollar fine.
Yeah.
So are we doing, are we putting forth any other effort this year?
I don't know. We haven't talked about it yet, but we certainly can do what we've been doing.
Chief Black, do you have an answer for that?
It worked so well last year that we, we had the committee that it was established exactly what we needed to do to educate the public about safe and sane fireworks. The educational of the public was really our main focus on that. What allowed us to experiment with that as we moved forward, a lot of things that we initiated last year, or the year before that, has really worked out quite well, including the ordinance that you all approved on the fireworks ordinance, which really decreased a lot of the fireworks that were brought in that we were able to intercept, as well as working with the CDF and trying to, if they are not busy in another area, they come up here and they patrol around with us. And so a lot of those, it was a multi-level type of operation.
Right. So is any of that being implemented this year?
Not as far as an organized, structured committee, no. We're going to go on the same type of scenario as we did last year.
So CDF will be helping again?
Hopefully, if they don't get called out from any other location, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I will say the regional representatives were, I was concerned about the greater Del Norte area, because, of course, that's where most of the fire danger is going to be, is out in the woods. And he said that they were waiting for the governor to come out and decide what they were going to do with even safe and sane fireworks, because a lot of areas of California are, of course, more of a tinderbox than we are. And so I don't know if that's happened yet, but, but it'll be real interesting to see what happens this year. But thank you for your efforts and keep this all safe. Thanks.
Sorry for that.
Well, that's okay.
It seemed appropriate.
Very, I appreciate it. Okay. Solid Waste Management Authority, we did have a meeting of the Solid Waste Management Authority, and we're, we're, we're still working on directions to go, but we did pass the budget for 2014, '15. Local Transportation Commission, you've already heard about. I went to that meeting, and we also had a try-to-see-close session, of which I can't report out. So I just want you to know we were busy a few hours ago. So that's, unless there's anything more to come before us, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and the time of our next meeting will be July 7th, Monday, July 7th, at 5:00 PM. Okay? Thank you.
I'm looking forward to hearing from the state on our negotiations for the loan, and I, I feel comfortable with approving the tentative budget as it is, especially for the sewer. This is a tool, the budget is, and I think that we can be able to approve this- This is a tool, the budget is, and I think that we can be able to approve this budget tonight with the notion that, that this budget will be coming back, in particular, the sewer budget, when we have word from our negotiating team with the state for the sewer, the sewer fund. So I think that that'll be all right for us to go ahead and approve this unfortunate deficit that we have with this sewer fund that we have, and we'll be able to do some refiguring on what we have with the sewer budget itself. So I'm not uncomfortable with what we have at this point, because, as I said, this is a tool that we have, that we can make adjustments next month, or the month thereafter, and be able to do some adjustments after that. So, I'm comfortable with that. I, I do believe I understood that this is a very concise, concisely written, and pretty, pretty clear in everything. The only thing that I have a question on is, how many million miles does Chief Wakefield have on his, his rig that he's, and how many pieces of duct tape and whatnot have you had to put on it? So, I'm really happy that we get to get a new, new vehicle for you, and so, thank you for being able to keep it together, the, the rig for us, for yourself, so, and I'm really happy that we're getting a new one for you, so, that's my comments.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Gaston.
And I, I'm, I have to congratulate the staff. I mean, this is good budget. You guys are the experts, you're the ones who put the numbers together, and you, you're bringing them to us, and so I trust what you're saying, and I understand that we are working on these deficits that we're trying to overcome. Not like some other government entities that might be like US Congress or something like that. We don't try to spend into the deficits year after year and bring up big debts. By law, we have to balance our budgets, and the city's working very hard to do that. And a lot of the stuff that they're working on is gonna come back and help the city and the ratepayers as we go forward into the future. So, great job, everybody.
What law are you referring to, that we have to balance the budget? Because if that was the law, we, we wouldn't be able to pass this budget tonight.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, city budgets, we all try to balance them all, all, at all the times, balance the budget, so.
Okay. I, I read the budget over pretty thoroughly, and went in and talked with Emily, and she answered a lot of my questions that I had on, on specific budget lines. One of the things that, I don't know if the rest of you thought about, but when you looked at some of the departmental budgets, they had basically nothing in them for 2014-15, and yet it's a part of our budget. And in talking with Emily, I just wanted you to know, when it comes to those four or five departmental budget that you'd otherwise think you could just discard, because there's not, there appears to be no expenditure or new expenditures or new revenues, it's because there are, generally, it's because there are funds in that, in that budget. That was, this was to reflect the, the revenues and expenditures, but there are funds in there, so we have to keep that, that, that departmental budget there. Just, I don't know if you thought about that, but I thought, why do we have these things with nothing in them? It's because there are, there is money, yeah, in those locations. I, you know, I too am very concerned about the sewer, the sewer deficit. We need to really keep a close eye on it. There are budgets that are sometimes approved as deficit budgets. I've been a part of many of those at the school district over time, where you have to depend on reserves and things when, when the budget goes by. But the good news is that this particular budget is a balanced budget. It, it balances, it maintains a prudent reserve, and I'm really pleased that we're able to do that. We never know if there's gonna be a really difficult situation, especially some physical calamity that would put us, you know, take some of our TOT revenues and other revenues that, that we count on for a little while. And so, we have to have a, a good, healthy reserve, and this budget does that. The, I wanna, I wanna commend the pool especially. The, the pool has, has, reducing its deficit each year, yes, it does cost general fund dollars to keep the pool open, but it seems to be getting reduced every year, and I appreciate the users of the pool, and also pool administration for doing what they do to, to make things run, run efficiently, and, and, and provide a wonderful service. So, you know, it, it is, it's, it's a roadmap, we know budgets are living documents, and it's a roadmap of how we're gonna get through 2014-15. And I fully expect that if the sewer situation doesn't change, that staff will be back within the next two or three months, and we'll have to, we'll have to make some hard, hard choices.
Mayor Holly, when you say it's a balanced budget, are you referring to the general fund?
I'm saying the total budget for all funds for the city are balanced. The, the revenues, revenues and expenditures are balanced. That, I think that's one of the first slides that you had that showed that.
I was just, my concern was with the net operating results, which were negative 712,000. That's where my concern lies.
Well, can you answer that, Emily? I, I, I understood, I understood that the revenues and the expenditures, the expenditures were offset by the total revenues.
I think if you look at that 712,000, you see that in many cases, what we're doing is we are spending a reserve that we had from a balance moving forward. The program income waivers that we were talking about earlier this evening are a very good example of that. That's not new revenue in this fiscal year, it's rev, in fiscal year 14-15, it's revenue that we had in prior fiscal years that had accumulated there. And if you look at the page 2 of 65, you can see, if you look at the far right column, what the ending fund balances are projected to be at 630-15, the only fund there with a negative is the sewer fund. The other funds are not, are not spending more than they have in their reserves.
And we, we fully hope, and I hope, I'd rather say expect, that, that will be the case in the sewer fund when, when the dust settles.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So we've all had an opportunity to comment. Any other questions of, of staff? Okay, so we'll bring it, again, back to the city council, and I entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 2014-25, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2014-15. And also to consider and approve Resolution 2014-26, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City, selecting the annual adjustment factors for the calculation of the 213-214 appropriations limit for the city of Crescent City.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that, you know, just because I have most of the questions, doesn't mean that I don't appreciate all of the work that has gone into this budget. I very much appreciate it. And, you know, as I've stated many times before, we are in a much better position than we were five years ago. And our, our financial structure is in a much better position than we were quite a few years ago. So, what I'm concerned about is the fact that we don't have a Plan B right now for our sewer fund. And I would have been more comfortable tonight if we were presented with the way it is today, and what it could look like if the state comes back and helps us out. Doesn't mean that I don't agree with what you're doing, or what you've done is, is incorrect. I'm just saying that I think that with a sewer fund, being proactive is the most important way that we can actually handle that account. So, I would prefer to see that Plan B before we hit August or September. That's just how I feel. Thank you.
We'll definitely bring up those plans, or our update with the state, and then July 1st, meaning in August is, is our target on that. Mayor, when you take a motion on this, if we can get two separate motions, one for each resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Sure. Mr. Enya, would you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll restate that and go with the first Resolution 2014-25.
Okay.
I'll amend my second then, to just have the first resolution.
Very good. Resolution 2014-25 has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, could you pull the vote on 2014-25, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gaston?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you. We have 2014-26 before us.
I'll move for approval of that Resolution 2014-26.
Second.
Okay, 2014-26 has been moved and seconded. Any other further discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gaston?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. That was a, a healthy discussion, and one of the most important things we do as a city council, so I appreciate all that you've done. Okay, continuing business, we have none. Under new business, we have, we're going to be considering and, and consider authorizing city staff to advertise and receive bids for the Shoreline RV Park reconstruction project, and take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Plotzel.
Yeah, Mayor Holly, members of the council, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor present this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
You never wanna be the guy that goes after the budget, so I hope this goes- Yeah. It's been a long time coming, since the city took over operations of the Shoreline RV Park back in, I believe it was about 2006 now. Back then, the council had, at the time, made the wise decision to take over operations of the park, since it was rapidly deteriorating and losing a substantial amount of revenue at the time. It's come a long way for the last seven, eight years, so we finally got to the point where we actually procured some funding, are able to move forward with the reconstruction of the park. So I'll just give a brief rundown. We applied for an Economic Development Agency grant, and we received that grant of $777,690. To date, this current council and past council also made a wise decision to start setting aside funding for this RV Park reconstruction project, which is finally paying off. So currently, we're estimating we'll have about an additional $162,000 from RV Park fund balance, for an estimated total of $939,690. And to go backtrack a little bit here, initially, when we applied for the EDA grant, we estimated this project at about $2 million for the complete project. And that's to redo all of the infrastructure in the park, redesign the park sites, paved roads, paved paths, it's a brand-new park. Unfortunately, we came kinda at the end of their funding, so the $777,000 we received was about what they had left over. They liked the project, they wanted to fund it, that's what they were able to do. And I'll say, I think this is always where the, the city shines, the staff does the best job. When we get these projects, we have to do them, and we don't have enough money to do them, but able, we are able to actually, in the end, figure out ways to, to design the projects, and get the funding, and make them work. And so I do wanna give a lot of credit out to Michael Young, who did a lot of the design workforce on this project, and is able to creatively come up with some ways in the design to save a lot of money. As I mentioned, it was about, estimated originally about $2 million. Currently, if you look at the engineer's estimate, we're about $1,313,000 for this project, that's for the complete project. So, to date, for the project, we've acquired the funding, we completed the planning and design work, and we're getting ready to implement the, the reconstruction project. So before you tonight, and one other thing I'll add, right now, we have submitted an application for our coastal development permit with the California Coastal Commission. At this point, I have to announce that they will be taking this project to their July meeting, where we expect to get approval for this project. So all permitting will be in place by the time we receive bids on this project. It's, anybody's dealt with these types of projects, you know, they take a long time, and being in the coastal zone obviously adds another dimension onto it. So again, and I'll just point back to recommended actions too, when we get to the end here, you know, kinda take these steps, they were recommended by a city attorney. So before you tonight, we're coming before the council to ask for the, to put this project out to bid. So what we're asking for tonight is actually just to announce this project, put it out to bid, and to receive bids from potential contractors. I will run over the engineer's estimates real quick for this project. Again, total project costs, estimated project cost, I'll emphasize that, is $1,313,800. And how EDA works is they like to see deducts, so we're working with their grant funding, so we play by their rules. So as you look as we go through this engineer's estimate, deduct A is basically removing the paved paths, about $162,000. Then we get the deduct B, which would be removing all of the paving, which would basically be the paths and the streets, which gets us down to a little over a million dollars. And then we just deducts from there on. Obviously, at this point, we don't know what the estimates are gonna come in at. Hopefully, it'll be better, you know, it'll come in lower rather than high, and we can get a lot more work done. I'm hoping worst-case scenario, you know, we, we get, at least get the complete infrastructure back into the park, and we're back over. We're expecting this project to take approximately three months. The EDA required us to begin construction by October 3rd. If you look at the schedule, it's presented. Come to the council tonight for authorization to proceed with the bids. We expect to have bid opening by July 21st, 2014, so we've asked you to set that date as the bid opening date of 4:00. We expect after that, then we have a council award, hopefully, if all goes well, by October 4th, which means we could actually proceed in September 2nd, but really, we're shooting for October. Just because we're still in the summer months, we like to make as much, you know, bring as much revenue as possible by the time we begin construction, and hopefully, a couple of past years have indicated, we'll have some decent weather in those October, November, December to conclude this project. So before you then, you have the engineer's estimate that I just kinda briefly went over, and then the bid packet. Bid packets have broken down about three main parts, was the invitation to bid, which kinda has your bonding requirements and your contract, and all that good stuff. And your project specifications, which basically goes over all of the components of the project. And then finally, at the end, are the, the plans for the project. And also I had, appreciate Mr. Young's assistance in preparing the bid packet as well, but I will answer any questions to the best of my ability if you might have on this.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Taylor? Okay, so I believe the first thing to do then is to open this up to public comment. Are, is there any public comment on this, on this project? Okay, so we'll bring this back then to the city council.
So Eric, do you need the recommendations to come in separate motions?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I just have one que, are you going to be at the coastal commission meeting, or do you need to?
Yeah, I guess we'll discuss that, I'll discuss that with the city manager. At this point, all indications from coastal is, they're actually trying to get this on their consent calendar. It's a pretty straightforward project, we don't have a lot of real, I mean, the pro, the park's gonna be in such a better condition, all the way around from where it is now, if you look at, you know, the baseline, you know, condition that it's in now. We're also improving the drainage, we're improving water quality control on the site, so.
So, that'd be great if it's on the consent.
Hopefully, yeah.
I think it'll be a first.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specs as presented for Shoreline RV Park Reconstruction Project, and approve the bid documents as presented.
Separate motions, please.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Just the first part. Can we restate that?
No.
Not you. Okay.
Do you have-
Still seconding.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for the Shoreline RV Reconstruction Project. Any other discussion? Okay, so seeing no more discussion, would you please pull the vote on the first?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gaston?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the bid documents as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bid documents as presented. Any other discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote again?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gaston?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes.
And I will also make a motion to direct staff to solicit bids for the project set for July 21st, 2014 at 4:00 PM, with the award, do you want the award included?
And-
The date.
Councilmember, would you also include that the bids will be opened at City Hall, 377 J Street, Crescent City, California?
Okay, I'm gonna redo my, my motion, but do you want the- Okay, I'm gonna redo my, my motion, but do you want the, the award and notice to proceed dates in my motion?
I think at this time, we just need the, the bid opening date, correct?
And, and location.
And location.
And location, okay. I, I will make a motion to direct staff to solicit for the bids for the project, set for July 21st, 2014, to be opened at City Hall in City of Crescent City at 4:00 PM, for the bid opening.
Okay, very good.
Second.
We have a second on that motion, to direct staff to solicit bids, and, and sets the time and date of the bid opening and that location of that opening. So, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gastineau?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing us this really exciting project.
Thank you, and then just, you know, we'll be back before you again, hopefully, in August.
Okay.
Good job, Eric.
Yep.
Long time, honey.
You can't get this done by July 4th, though.
It's gonna be a great project.
Yeah, okay, so, moving on then, I think we're finished with our regular business items, legislative matters to come before us? Anything regarding legislation that we need to be aware of?
Catherine, maybe?
Catherine, maybe?
No, I'm a little bit behind on any kind of things that have come through email, my emails all messed up, so, if there's, if any of you guys have gotten anything, I'm just trying to look right now, but.
Okay, so, we'll move on to city manager report, city council directives.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In Saturday's paper, there was a discussion of legislation pending affecting farmers' markets, authored by Assemblyman Dickerson of Sacramento, that would require that any certified farmer's market must have only vendors who are marketing produce grown in California, and some additional specifications. Very difficult, I think, for us that live up on the border, because I think we know that some of the produce at our farmers' markets, I think all of them, comes from out of state. We have Oregon vendors coming in. I was at the Gasky Farmers Market on Sunday, it was the first ever, and it was a very nice little affair, but the only person actually purveying produce was from Oregon, and from, actually from a place about, a farm about 20 miles north of Grants Pass, along I-5, so, but they had a nice, a nice selection, so. This particular legislation, I know, is opposed by the farmers' market and the people that are there, it would be a shame to lose our certification.
Bob, is that the same legislation that Ron Phillips came and talked to us about?
Yes.
At the last meeting? And I think we all agreed at that point to write a letter in, against?
Oh, has that been done?
I don't know if he wrote the letter, but I think we, we did give direction that we were in opposition of that.
Great, then we just need to get the letter out.
Could we, could we prepare a letter? That would be great.
It occurred to me that perhaps having a local opt-out, because as I underst, as I read the article, the legislation has to do with a bunch of violations or misrepresentations occurring at farmers' markets in Los Angeles. It's like, you know?
Isn't that how it works?
That is how it works, but I think maybe we can ask for a carve-out where, you know, there'd be a local option to not fall under that regulation. That way, we wouldn't try to stop the whole moving freight train, but we could just maybe get a, get an exception.
Good idea. Okay, anything else under legislation? No, and I don't think there was anything under city manager, council directives?
I'm just gonna introduce Mr. Berry?
Yeah, it's a big good time to do that.
To the city council, the pending retirement of Chief Plack, Mr. Berry's going to step in for a few months until we hire a permanent chief of police, and he's here this week, and he's gonna be here a week in July, to get used to the department, kind of learn the, you know, the procedures, and then start on August 1st, or August 4th.
Okay, well, welcome to the community. Did you wanna say anything this evening?
What is it?
Okay, why don't you stand up, so at least we can see you?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I've met with Chief Plack a few times already, I'm very impressed with the, the community that you have here, the, the staff that has greeted me and helped me at City Hall and the Police Department. I'm really looking forward to just being involved to keep the ball rolling and what you already have in place, and help you prepare for the future with the next chief, but thank you very much.
I was very impressed with your resume, and I saw that you started the Police Department in Truckee?
Yes, very exciting event.
I graduated from Truckee High School, but that was at a time when we all behaved and we really didn't need a Police Department, so.
Right, yes, I understand. And there was no problems up there.
Okay.
An interesting thing happened about the second month in Truckee, there was a big party that we got involved in, and the citizens of Truckee told us that the Truckee Police Department didn't know what it was like to be in Truckee versus the state of California, so, it was interesting. But thank you very much for this opportunity.
Nice to meet you, thank you for being here. And I wanna acknowledge Chief Plack, and there'll be more acknowledgements before this is done, but I wanna thank you for all your service, I didn't want to, certainly didn't wanna ignore that tonight, but there'll be more, we'll make you good and embarrassed at some point. Very good. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and on to city council reports. Mr. Ania, would you like to start us off?
Well, we had a tri-agency meeting prior to this meeting, that was in closed session, so, there's really nothing to report out, and we had a transportation meeting last week, and there's really nothing to report on either, we're working on various projects and our, our funding. I think that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Kelly?
Just another reminder that the 4th of July is coming up very quickly, and if you're gonna be in a parade, you need to let the chamber know. And, I didn't have a lot going on last week, my son graduated from high school, yay, everybody clap.
That was.
It was a long road, and I think that's about it for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Catherine?
I guess we should mention that we had a two-by, or an ad hoc committee meeting today as well with the healthcare district, which was fruitful in that they've agreed to set up a, well, I'm gonna set up a meeting, but they've agreed...